Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have our invocation by Chaplain Joe Durham of the Clayton County Police Department. He's also a pastor at Fairview Baptist Church. It'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
As we pray, if you would just join me in thinking about the family and friends and coworkers of Jay Wood, who passed away, served the Clayton County Parks and Recs as an employee, and we mourn his loss. Let's pray together. Father, we do thank you for your love and your mercy and your grace, and we stop at this moment, Lord, to just acknowledge you tonight. We call this an invocation because we invoke you to be here in this meeting and to be among us. We do pray especially for the family of this one who's lost from our midst, and the coworkers and the friends, and just ask your blessings upon them and your comfort. We pray for our commissioners tonight and our chairman. Just ask God your blessings on them and that you would guide them and give them wisdom. Thank you for all of us that are here tonight, and we pray that you would guide each of us. And we thank you that we have the freedom to be here and we have the privilege of serving you together. And we ask that you bless our county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Good evening and welcome to the September 18th, 2018 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, I have a few, Madam Clerk. First is ordinance 2018-97, ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance specifically Appendix A zoning. There still needs to be a little more work done on that. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous? Also, item G of the consent agenda, I'm asking that we remove that from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda. It's the Budget Amendment 2-9, FYE 0630, 2019. It should be considered with HR request to add administrative secretary position at Parks and Rec. So basically, we're getting cart before the horse. We want everything to line up if it's approved, and then the budget amendment is approved as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
One more, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like for on the consent agenda item A-B to be taken separately as well.
Okay, A-B is Resolution 2018-101. Resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into articles of agreement with certain charitable organizations, government agencies, and professional service providers. She's making a motion. I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Are there any further amendments?
Well, hold on. Yes, I would like to take 2018-98 separately.
You'd like to put that, take it off of, that's not in the agenda? You just want to take it separate?
Take it separate, yes.
Separate or remove it?
Which one? Number seven?
It's on the, it's on the agenda. We can just take it separate.
Oh, no, no, no. No, no, no. I would like to remove that one.
You'd like to remove it?
Yes, number seven.
That's your motion. All right, Resolution 2018-98 is resolution to initiate a rezoning of certain property located on Tradeport Boulevard in the Mountain View District. It's been moved to, motion to remove. Is there a second on it?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Are there any further amendments?
Hold on. Let's see. Under, yes, number eight, 2018-99. Okay, if we would, actually, I would like it removed.
Okay, you'd like Resolution 2018-99, resolution terminating the moratorium on the acceptance of all applications for a development or building permits. So basically, it does with the moratorium. Is there a second?
I second, Mr. Chair.
All right, with this one, are there any questions? So I have a question. We spoke last week about there not being a need, or I did, for a moratorium being in place. And this resolution, which I asked for, simply was going to let the moratorium let and allow those businesses and property owners be able to talk to developers, investors, so they can move their property. Now, this moratorium has been a hindrance, and I do believe that, I think it's pretty clear now that Amazon is not coming, so I feel like there is no need for a moratorium. It's also funny that with this asking to keep it in place, but the Development Authority wants to buy up property and land over there, so I don't understand why they would want to buy property when the homeowners can't do anything to sell their property to somebody where they can be more profitable, as opposed to the Development Authority trying to buy their property and hold them basically hostage from doing any business at all.
Mr. Chair?
So that's my, my comment on that. Yes, ma'am?
We have a comprehensive study that's being done. It should be finished up in less than a month. Also, the moratorium will be off come December. And for this to be on the agenda, and it's in District Two, never have I known any commissioners, and I've been attending commissioner meetings since late eighties, nineties, or whatever, where they do not respect the wishes of the commissioner of that district.
Well, you're the commissioner of that district and I'm the chairman, so that district is within my county, so therefore I should have a say.
Oh, your county?
It's the county.
You say your county. I thought you said your county.
Our county. Because I'm elected countywide, so that is within the district that I represent.
Well, it's just a matter of respect. You can want those things, but at least mention it to the district commissioner.
You've already known what my county is.
No, I did not know this was gonna be on the agenda, so I'm asking for it to be removed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just want to chime in on this. One of the things I've always said is, just because we've always done it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And I do want to mention that there's nowhere in our enabling, nor in the state of Georgia, does it recognize district governance. And I understand the matter of respect, but at the end of the day, the board, we did have a conversation about it. So I do feel that in light of that conversation, and in light of the information that's been brought to us, that the Development Authority, which is run by a current commissioner, is looking to purchase that land away from those who currently own the land, and as you and I both know, that that probably will diminish their ability to receive the profits that they would receive later with the arms-length transaction outside of government. I do concur with you. So I do understand where you come from, Madam Commissioner, but it does bother me that this board continues to operate under something that is not necessarily lawful and not recognizing our enabling. And then also, more than that, it's just a little bit, it's not up to date, in my personal opinion, because people want to be able to move the land and progress, and either we're gonna be a part of that progression, or we're not, and we're gonna end up in court for forever. So I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
And as a point of clarity, Mr. Chairman, I would encourage you, my fellow commissioners, and the public at large to review the minutes to all of the Development Authority meetings, as far back as you want to go. There are not currently, nor have there ever been, any proceedings to acquire properties by the Development Authority or on behalf of the Development Authority in the Mountain View area, or by anyone affiliated with the Development Authority in the Mountain View area, nor does the moratorium currently in place have anything to do with open market transactions. If there's somebody looking to buy or sell their property there, certainly won't come to do so.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Okay, well, the last thing I'm just gonna say is, you know, I respect the fact that each of you represent a district, but we as a board collectively need to keep the county as a whole in mind, to move this county forward.
I called a question.
It takes all of us. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's three-two, it passes.
Are there any further amendments to the agenda? Here and now, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So move.
I didn't ask for a move.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four-one, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is that motion passed, consent agenda as, as is? As noted, as noted with the, with the noted changes.
Okay, with the noted changes, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay, two.
Three-two. It passes, next.
The board will now consider a request of Wanda Willis, Human Resources.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the Parks and Recreation, Human Resources is requesting to add an administrative secretary. If approved, this classification will provide administrative support to the Deputy Recreation Administrator with a focus on special events, International Park, and six recreation centers. This classification is a non-exempt civil service position and will have a budgetary impact of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm available for any questions.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Moore.
We just had a budget. We just approved a budget. We just changed a lot over there in Parks and Rec, and I've already talked to our leader of Parks and Rec. Why is this all of a sudden coming up? Was this not considered back then? We didn't just change and move over positions from Youth Services, to create Youth Services Department, and we just approved this budget. We're only in September. Why is this before this board?
Unfortunately, Mrs. Ambles and Mr. Hodges are the one that had the discussions, and she relayed to me that Mr. Hodges would be here to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Hodges, can't you come take the podium, please?
Yes. It's the question, why is this before this board? You didn't take this into consideration when we were doing our budget planning, or when we were reorganizing, and if I recall correctly, we were asking for some changes some time ago, and I was told we were doing a compensation study, and now we got this before us for this change and this addition. Where did this come from, and why is it before this board?
Excuse me, if I, is this the one for Parks and Rec, for Ahmed?
Correct.
He's an assistant for Ahmed, okay.
You didn't know, we didn't know we needed this assistant back when we did the budget?
No, ma'am.
So there was no foresight at all? So that's...
I called the question, Mr. Chairman.
I thought we just said we needed to respect commissioners.
They called the question.
Ooh, Lord, and verse of Jesus.
Okay.
Mr. Troy, I'm so glad you can't talk for yourself today.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three-two, it passes. Thank you, Troy.
Mr. Chairman, did we want to go back to item G on the consent agenda with regards to the budget amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Ramona Bivens, CFO.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners. Budget Amendment 2-09 is for Parks and Recreation, is to amend the budget in the amount of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, utilizing fund balance to create an administrative secretary position to support the Recreation Service Program.
All right, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I'm gonna make another comment. This is out of order.
What part is out of order?
Moving that money, sir.
Moving that money, what?
Go ahead, go ahead, sir. We're gonna get through this meeting with that. Thank you.
Any other questions or statements? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's four-one, it passes.
Thank you.
Chuck Reed, Legal Department.
It don't matter.
How would you like to take them? Uh, I think...
All together, but A and B separately, as we approved.
No, we didn't approve to take them all together.
Except for A and B.
Okay, let me make that call, please. Mr. Reed, you only have...
We only have, we have two.
You only have one or two, right?
We have two. We have Resolution 2018-101 and 2018-100.
Okay, give me that again.
We have A-B from the consent agenda, which is Resolution 2018-101, and then we have number nine on the regular agenda, which is 2018-100.
Okay, you have to take them second.
Okay. The first is Resolution 2018-101, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into articles of agreement with certain community charitable organizations, governmental entities, I'm sorry, governmental agencies and professional service providers located and conducting business in Clayton County, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreements and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion, with the exception of the Community Services Authority. I've asked for some information concerning, you know, their board being in compliance, and I have not received it. I'm gonna make a motion with the exception of the Community Services Authority until we get this information, until I get the information that was requested.
That's the Community Services Board.
Community Services Authority, yes.
Authority. That's your motion.
That's my motion.
I'd also like to point out one thing, Commissioners. There is a line item for the UGA Cooperative that I've understand now is a, it's already reflected elsewhere in the budget, so it also asks that that not be included as well in the Exhibit A that's attached.
And what was that one?
It's the UGA...
Extension.
Extension. It's already reflected elsewhere in the budget. I think historically, it had been reflected here in Exhibit A for the state purposes to let them know we had approved this, but given that it's already in our budget, if we have to do that for the state again, we can just do a separate resolution, letting them know that we do approve those funds.
I don't see that. I'm sorry, it's called UGA?
I missed it.
I was looking at the most recent one that Finance sent out.
Right, it's on the attachment.
It's not on it?
It's on the attachment A, it's, sorry. It's on the attachment A to the Resolution 101.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Was a motion made and seconded?
Well, at this point, I think we're, I asked Commissioner Gregory, if she want to amend her motion to include the extension.
Yes, I amend that motion to include the extension portion that Attorney Reed mentioned.
Okay, is there a second on it?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Second item is Resolution 2018-100, which is a resolution extending the effective date of the abolishment of the Clayton County Department of Economic Development, to authorize the chairman to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to authorize the Human Resources Director to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
So moved.
I didn't ask for a motion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Board, we also need a, an executive session on litigation. Just litigation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the next three items are board appointments.
All right, first board appointment we have is appointment to the Housing Authority Board to fill the unexpired term of Latasha Gray, who resigned. The term expires on May 11, 2019, for a board appointment. Are there any recommendations?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. I do, I would like to nominate Dr. Alika Anderson to fill that position that Ms. Gray resigned from.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's three-two, it passes. Next board appointment is to the Library Board to fill the expired term of Ben Janey Kareem. Term is three years, expiring on July 31, 2021, for a board appointment. Are there any recommendations?
I, no, I'll do Mr. Small, because Mr. Small was...
Excuse me, was that a...
No, no, I was yielding to Commissioner Hamrick, because I...
Any recommendations? Okay, hold that for the next. Another, next appointment is for another position on the Library Board to fill the expired term of Daniel Small. The term is three years, expiring on October 2nd. Also, 2021, for a board appointment. Any recommendations?
Yes, I would like to recommend Yasmin Naja.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Mr. Chair, can we go back and revisit number 11? I do have someone I would like to nominate for that board.
All right, is there a point, any recommendations for a Library Board to fill the expired term of, I believe that's Ben Janey Kareem?
Yes, sir, I would like to nominate Reverend Emmett McCord of Rex.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Mr. Chair, can I please go back and amend my vote? I did, it was a silent vote, but on the, the grants, and the only reason is because I've been meeting and working on this all day, and I saw there was an email that came out. I do have to make a note that if the grant does include, which is an organization I do support, Gigi's House, then my vote's gonna be nay, because there was not an application submitted, along with all the other applications, and so that is a concern.
Procedurally, Chuck, I mean, Mr. Reed, what do we need to do on that?
I just need to amend my vote.
And for clarification purposes, is it still in there, Madam CFO?
And I didn't see it.
So that would be yes?
She would have to, she can go back and amend her vote to reflect a nay on that.
So what's the procedure to do that?
Suppose you can make a call to reopen the vote for her, to make her, to revote on that item, or she can make...
It's my understanding that based upon the, I can't even think, I apologize, I have a headache tonight, but it's my understanding, all I have to do is submit it to the clerk with my statement, because I do support Gigi's House. I really do, I support the efforts. My concern is we have five other organizations which tug at my heartstrings, that follow the process, follow the procedure, and got the applications in. And I just feel that this board needs to begin to do things in order and follow a policy and procedure, and so unfortunately, those organizations were not chosen, but we're gonna give it to someone, give funding to someone that did not follow the process. So for me, I just want to amend the vote for me with that statement.
Okay.
Yes, and for the record, I agree with her. I thought that had been taken out of there.
I was told it was.
I should have checked four times. So I'm gonna amend my vote as well, Madam Clerk, to reflect a negative vote, so it's three-two, but it still passes.
It does.
Okay, next.
Item 13 is a zoning petition. The applicant is John Saunders. The request is for a conditional use permit for a service station. The subject property is located at 6141 Highway 85, Riveterell, Georgia. This is for a decision only. The zoning public hearing was held on August 21, 2018. This is Commission District Two, Commissioner Hamrick's district.
Yeah, do you have a comment, a statement, before we take a vote, Madam Hamrick? No? All right, well, the matter before us has already had a public hearing, so only for a vote, and at this time, I ask for a motion?
Yes, my motion is to vote denial.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in fa, oh, any questions, comments? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Sorry, sir.
Item number 14 is a zoning public hearing. The applicant is Shelley Borders, and the request is for a conditional use permit for Cottage Food Services. The subject property is located at 7823 Big Bend Court, Lake Spivey, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval. This is Commission District Four, Vice Chairman Edmison's district.
Is the applicant present? Please go forward. Please state your name and residence in any statement that you might have.
Shelley Borders reside at 7823 Big Bend Court in Lake Spivey, Georgia. And what was the other?
Whatever you want to tell us. Make a statement.
Oh, I'm proposing to, my petition is for having in-home bakery, baking cupcakes and cakes, cookies.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board for Ms. Borders? All right, so is anybody here for or against this zoning request? Anybody for or against would like to speak?
I've got something to say.
Come forward.
Miki Garber, Rex, Georgia, speaking on behalf of these good folks for their zoning request, for and against. Let me put this into a caveat here, for them. They're requesting a cut, a conditional use permit. I think from henceforward, that there should be written into the articles of anybody running a business, that, that for the home bakery, she is, she is required to have a health examinations and, and from food service, but also the outside should be kept free of any debris. That should be written into our zoning laws for helping keeping this county clean. I am neither, I am not against this woman operating her business, but I want her to know that it, not only should the inside be clean, but as well as the property on the outside. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Here and now, Commissioner... Here and, uh, Commissioner Edmison.
Thank you. I know that the public, the community meeting was held on August twenty first, and that these minutes say that nobody from the community or general public was in attendance whatsoever. I did speak with some residents of the Runnymede subdivision, including one of our sitting judges, um, that were not aware of those public meetings, and I, I presume that they were properly advertised, but, um, I'm concerned that the neighborhood mayor may not have had an opportunity to, uh, to vet this, and while certainly any residentially zoned property in Clayton County would provide for a conditional use for cottage, um, food for the type-two home occupation, I do think that the character of an existing neighborhood should be considered, and while there is certainly a location within the residential, um, zoning throughout the county, um, in the middle of a well-established neighborhood, uh, causes me some concern, and so because of that, I'm going to, uh, make a motion for denial.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Those, any other statements, comments? Here and now, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Sorry.
And the final public hearing for this evening is an amendment to the official zoning map. The applicant is the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, District Three, for properties located on Commercial Court. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval. This is District Three, Commissioner Franklin Warner's district.
It's the applicant present. It's the applicant present.
Mr. Chairman, this was initiated by.
Oh, my bad, okay, all right.
This was one that, um, we asked to put on the agenda, because the zoning.
Basically, we asked for this to be, um, put on our agenda a few months ago, because there were some zoning issues. When we redid the zoning map, uh, we got together and went over it, but the zoning that, uh, was approved did not reflect the changes or the discussions that we had, and it caused some issues for several folks. And so if you go back to, I think it's a couple meetings ago, uh, we approved a business to go in, but with the exception that we would go back and revisit the zoning for this entire area, so that it would be conducive for all the businesses in that particular area. So that would be the county, sir. That would be us.
Okay, so what you were asking us to do?
To approve it. My motion is to approve the amendment, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it is, it is a public hearing, so we do want to ask if anyone wants to speak in favor or in opposition.
Does anybody here want to speak up or against this request?
I want to speak again.
Come on up, Mr. Garber.
Mickey Garber, Rex, Georgia. In any rezoning issues, again, I request that you put in not just the parameters around the rezoning, but cleanliness be made an issue just as important as any other issue that you're putting forth. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for or against? All right, go ahead. Oh, wait.
My name's Stephen Fincher. I'm the president of Clayton House. Our property is clean. Uh, we need this rezoning to be able to keep Clayton House going, we're a nonprofit organization, and we put a lot of our money into this place to recondition it, rebuild it, restructure it, for our purpose and to help the people of Clayton County. And it is clean. We keep the grass cut.
Yes, sir.
Everything's out of the way. I wish everybody on the street would. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Commissioner?
I just make a motion that we go ahead and approve this, so that, um, these business owners can go about their business, and that's it.
I'll second the motion. Any questions, comments? Those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that does conclude this evening's agenda. What, there was a request to go into executive session, and we also would have public comment afterwards.
Yes, is there a motion? Is there a motion to go into executive session for litigation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, before we do that, though, one more point of privilege. I would like to commend our Office of Youth Services for a job well done this weekend under the direction of Ms. Nicole Horn. Um, as we heard in our prayer, it was a loaded weekend for Clayton County, but let me tell you, what you and your department did was absolutely amazing, to be able to connect with our veterans, to honor our veterans, as well as our first responders. I commend you. You know, it stated that it's easy to work when you don't have pressure, but when you can operate under the pressure that you did this weekend, I think that you deserve extra kudos, you and your entire team. So proud of you.
And they look good over there in their blue.
Please tell. Would you all please stand up as Commissioner?
Let's give them another round of.
Hamrick just had.
All right, uh, is there a motion for executive session for litigation?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Uh, second to motion, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Those of you who are leaving, have a good evening. All right, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Would you like to take them all together?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The first is, uh, asking the board to approve a settlement in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, um, between the county and Regina King relating to an accident that occurred on January ninth, two thousand and sixteen, at Terra Boulevard, at the intersection with Upper Rivadale Road and unincorporated Clayton County. This is a, um, another settlement, which is a passenger of the same accident. Willie Bradley requesting that the board approve a settlement with him in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for an accident that occurred on January ninth, two thousand and sixteen, on Terra Boulevard, Terra Boulevard at or near its intersection with Upper Rivadale Road and unincorporated Clayton County, Georgia. We also are requesting that the board approve a settlement in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars for Celia Juarez, um, which is a car accident that occurred on or around March twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, on South Lake Parkway, at or in its, near its intersection with South Lee Street and unincorporated, I'm sorry, and incorporated Morrow, uh, Georgia. This is also a passenger in that same incident. We're requesting a settlement in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for Mauricio Pedron relating to an accident that occurred on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, on South Lake Parkway, at or near its intersection with South Lee Street and Incorporated Morrow, Georgia. We're also requesting, uh, two property damage settlements, um, one in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, uh, with Geico, a subcommittee of Shanika Ellison, uh, relating to an accident that occurred on October thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, at or near Clifton Church Road at Candace Way. And the final, um, request is for approval of a settlement of a property damage claim relating to, uh, an incident that occurred on January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, um, with, uh, claimant Jaclyn Thomas. This is the payee, was Progressive Premier Insurance Company. This accident occurred on Harper Drive and North Parkway, in the amount of five thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. We're also asking that the board would authorize the chief financial officer to, um, to, um, make a adjustment to the budget to ref, appropriate, to appropriate, uh, I said this last, uh, to amend the budget that were, were necessary to reflect an appropriate budget, uh, revenue source and expense for all of these.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here and now, those in favor of I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and count of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, and continuing to talk about and discuss crime and criminal activity in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and control of the Clayton County Police Department, as well as talking about crime and criminal activity all throughout the seven cities in Clayton County for last year, two thousand and seventeen, comparing it to the year before, two thousand and sixteen, as well as two thousand and fifteen, and given the full and complete crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers, I will now start with the fifth major crime category, which is criminal homicides. The term is self-explanatory. Last year, two thousand and seventeen, in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and control of the Clayton County Police Department, there were thirty-five reported cases of criminal homicides, compared to thirty-nine reported cases in two thousand and sixteen, and eighteen reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. Last year, two thousand and seventeen, in all of Clayton County, including unincorporated Clayton County, there were a grand total of fifty-four reported cases of criminal homicides, compared to fifty-five reported cases in two thousand and sixteen, and twenty-four reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. The analysis to date, last year, two thousand and seventeen, the number of reported cases of criminal homicides in unincorporated Clayton County decreased with a decrease of just four from two thousand and sixteen, but an increase of seventeen when compared to two thousand and fifteen. However, for the first seven-month time period of January to July of this year, two thousand and eighteen, the Clayton County Police Department, under the leadership authority and command of our chief of police, Kevin Roberts, who is committed to reducing crime and criminal activity in unincorporated Clayton County, has already seen a decrease of eight point seven percent with twenty-one incidents of criminal homicides committed to date, down from twenty-three in the same seven-month time period last year, two thousand and seventeen. Last year, two thousand and seventeen, the number of reported cases of criminal homicides in all of Clayton County decreased with a decrease of just one from two thousand and sixteen, but with a substantial increase of thirty when compared to two thousand and fifteen, the commentary. It is my sincere hope that the police departments in Clayton County, seven cities, are working just as hard as our own Clayton County Police Department are working to continue to decrease the criminal homicide rate in all of Clayton County, which is not seeing that much of a substantial decrease, because as all of you know, one of the main determinants of whether or not a Clayton County is a safe county to live in is its criminal homicide rate, as well as its aggravated assault rate, which in all of Clayton County are caused and dri, driven upward by the numerous criminally-minded people with their undesirable, unlawful, and criminal actions, behaviors, and conduct, who live alongside and with the law-abiding, respectful, honest, decent, and upstanding people who have relocated to Clayton County to live, work, and enjoy all of the good things that Clayton County has to offer. I will continue to give the crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers on all of the eight major crime categories for unincorporated Clayton County, as well as all of Clayton County, in the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting. Good day.
Jerry Beddingfield.
Jerry Beddingfield from Rex, Georgia, the old man from Rex. Uh, there's several things I wanted to talk to you about tonight, but I guess the main one and the importance, uh, Rex looks like a ghost town without the bridge open. We've had some international scouts coming down there twice, and the only thing they ask, well, when can the bridge be opened up? We're losing income, not just y'all, but we're losing income. We had another scout come out from a major movie company. When's the bridge gonna be opened up? Because they'd already seen it and already sent people down there, and they come down there, and they can't talk, because they can't answer that question to get under contract. Over the years, y'all have been talking about branding, but you turn businesses away. You gripe, not you, but the system gripes and complains about things, and we're running people away. People want to come to Clayton County, they want to start a business, they want to grow, they want to start a bakery, uh, first one thing and another. We need people to go out and filter this, to get the information back to y'all, to where y'all would have, everything y'all would have to need to make the right decisions, and, oh, for the whole county, not just picking and choosing what somebody wants and don't want. What's fair to all of us. You work for the whole county, and then they work for their districts, and if we don't work together, sooner or later, there's gonna be a major problem and everything. If you don't offer better taxes for homeowners to move in, then you're going to the wayside with other counties. If you don't offer more support for businesses, businesses that are good, clean, helpful businesses that you need, you're branding yourself, we don't want you, we don't need you, we don't want to listen to you, and we don't want to listen to the public come up here and talk about our problems and our woes. The police department is doing a great job, the fire department is doing a great job, we got a great water department, and we've got a group of people that can't get even their own finances. Y'all got thirty million dollars or more, and you can't fix our bridge, and somebody's turned their back on it, because they want to wake a walk bridge out of it. We don't want a walk bridge. Build it down at Spivey, where you're doing all that other stuff, but you can't fix our bridge. The train, and put it up on Facebook, there was a train down there blocked the other day, we had no way to get in and out of town. Whose fault is it? It's y'all's. Y'all run the government, you tell the government what to do, and you're making it, if somebody dies down there, it's gonna be the government and y'all's fault. You're making us lose income, you're not taking care, it looks like a ghost town. Now people sit down there and park, we have to call the police, they dump and track. It's just like a nightmare.
Your time is up.
Help us.
Time's up, sir. Alvin Farmer.
Alvin Farmer, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. You asked me to do some research on the recycling, I did that. I called Orange County. Those people are so good that you can go there and take a tour. So I asked you, Commissioner, and the rest of the people don't know, that when you go, take me with you, because I want to see it too. Also, uh, we were looking at a plastic bottle right before this meeting. Uh, California and Oregon charges, uh, will give you back ten cent when you turn in a plastic water bottle, so I think we need to incorporate that in Clayton County also. Uh, the second thing I want to talk about is streetlights. Somebody put these LED, and that man said it before, that means light, and then diodes in our neighborhood, they doing about twenty-five percent for what the old lights used to do. So the recommended fix to the problem is, give us more lights, give us better lights, yeah, that's it, more lights are better lights, but them lights y'all got ain't working. We kinda, you know, we, we kinda living in a ghost town in, in a lot of areas. Also, uh, and our subdivision is one-way in and one, one-way out. We want a dead inside when they coming into our subdivision. Y'all got on the street, which is up, up, up top on the street signs, it says no outlet. They have a gentleman that moved from California that's older than me, he thought, he, he didn't understand no outlet, he said, I can't plug in what? That's what he said. That makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. This gentleman here, you said UGA, nonetheless, you talking about the University of Georgia, I didn't know what you was talking about. That's what you was talking about? Or didn't sound like it, okay. And you, you the lawyer, right? I was gonna say KISL, that means Keep It Simple Lawyer. I didn't know you was talking about UGA. Somebody visiting might not know what you was talking about.
Mr. Farmer, address, address us, not their attorney.
Oh, okay, he said, he said UGA. Somebody visiting out of the state might not know what he means, so I ask you again, stop them acronyms amongst yourselves, and amongst the, uh, in, inside this building and all that kind of stuff, and then we will do a, uh, better job of understanding where y'all coming from, because I thought he was talking about something else. That's all I gotta say. Thank you, and have a great day.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioners. I, um, I find it quite.
I, uh, I find it quite disrespectful. I said I was gonna wait for the next six meetings before I speak to the board again, but, uh, there was a sense of urgency that came up. I found it quite disconcerting. I went to the Development Authority meeting on September eleventh, and it seems as though, uh, it was open cash register night. There was a couple of groups, consultants, one in particular, Pendleton Consulting Group, who got a thirteen thousand dollar non-performing contract for four months, which was a total of fifty-two thousand dollars. That's a non-performing contract. I don't understand why this money is being released in this way when you don't have to produce anything. I think last year, we had a consultant that we paid fifty-four thousand dollars to, and there still was no dirt moved. So at the end of the day, I find it disconcerting. We have an economic development director, and they've decided to add three more jobs to his department, and they had decided to hire a recruiting service, the Corvair Group, in order to do a talent search. Now, typically, that was twenty-five thousand dollars in charge last time, so three people typically was seventy-five thousand dollars, even though there was no contract amount stated. In my mind, why isn't that the Development Authority can simply do a intergovernmental agreement back to the HR department for the HR department to do the vetting for these three employees when it costs the citizens this amount of money? It's just basic common sense. So we got these comprehensive studies. We got a master plan on Old Dixie. We got a master plan on Mountain View that's under a moratorium. And that's two hundred thousand dollars. The Sizmore Group, who bid it on this contract, got a hundred thousand for Old Dixie and a hundred thousand for Mountain View. Now they have got an addendum to their contract, a twenty-three hundred dollars to educate the citizens on what they should have already been built in. So all of these, all of these monies, that they are just having a field day with, with no accountability. So at the end of the day, J and J Consulting Group wanted three thousand dollars a month for a consulting fee. Thank God they voted that down. So they have five point five million dollars in their coffers. They are spending this money like there's no tomorrow. And but the sad part about it, we are not getting anything for those dollars that we are spending. So at the end of the day, we have a moratorium on Mountain View. We got a master plan on Old Dixie. We got all of these consultants, and we have not moved one stick of dirt yet. So this is a total of close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Gail Beddingfield.
Uh, Gail Beddingfield, historic Rex Village. I've had some eye surgery, so I can see each one of you a little bit better. Still needs something for reading. I'd like to continue what my husband spoke about on the, on the bridge. This document is dated June twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, and it's from the State of Georgia Department of Transportation, an email where the gentleman, Mister Daniel, says that the bridge is a number one, which indicates it's on the National Register of Historic Places. It's the only bridge around like that here in Clayton County. My next document is dated, um, May the twenty-fifth, two thousand ten, and it's a repair, what they say needs to be repaired. Uh, it says the asphalt spalls and have a four-inch gap causing bumping. Rusting corrosion is at the gusset plates. Tac wells are broken loose. Mentions other wells that are broken loose. And under repairs, they tell y'all, tell the DOT here in Clayton County, two thousand ten, shim all pl- and piled a full bearing under the floor beam, encased all steel piles there in the string. Tighten all X-bracing supports that's located between each traverse member throughout the structure. And the lateral X brace and abutment number one has rusted and is broken. It's broken there. The next letter I have is from Mike Clements, the state bridge managing engineer, dated March the tenth, two thousand eleven. And he is telling us, or telling the state, is telling the county that there is state and federal money to fix this bridge. That there's assistance that can be used for funds and for materials such as concrete, reinforcement steel, pipes, or pile. And the state-owned crane can even be scheduled to help with the cost. So why, why were none of these repairs done in two thousand ten, and here it is, two thousand eighteen? So what I'd like to know, Mister Chairman, is I sent you an email the other day, and, um, what I had put in there was, uh, we've, we've had that bridge shut for over four months now. And I wish you would ask Mister Matarco to at least be so kind as to respond when I leave a voicemail or an email. I'd like to know, has there been any communication between him and the state of Georgia with what he's going to do? How much longer is he gonna need till we get some information on repairing it? Even though the Clayton County DOT was very quick to close our village bridge, they've not quit to respond with getting any of the work done. And I'd like to know why not? Uh, I'd like to know, this is very important in my, my estimation. I want to know, when was the last time the DOT, under Director Matarco, has done any work? Any work on that bridge whatsoever? Surely, he's got a log or some type of diary that he has to keep on what money he spends when he works on these things. Uh, I'd also-
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up, but-
Thank you, sir.
We will work on trying to get some of those questions answered.
I would appreciate, sir. Thank you, sir.
But I do know that we are waiting on a response from the state as well. Could you, the, the document that you got for the historic bridge-
Yes, sir.
Can you get, give that to Lieutenant Colefield, so I can get a copy of that, please?
Yes, sir. It's kind of scratched up, but he's welcome to it. I have the originals there at home.
Get them all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Garber.
If Mister Edmondson's in the bathroom, you can ask him to come out.
He's not here. He had an emergency. He had to go.
Then I guess he can watch me on closed-circuit TV now, can't he?
Yes. So state your name, please, and, uh-
Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. I want to state that I'm a very worldly traveler. I have been known to go as far as Marietta, Roswell, and Brookhaven. And let me say, in all my worldly traveling, that their streets are a lot cleaner than mine. Now, if they can do it, we can do it. We just have to have the gumption to do it. And in order to do it, let me say to all you commissioners, when y'all are voting on a business, a rezoning, or anything, that along with the other topics of conversation that you put in three dash one dash forty-four, or however how you enumerate them, that there should be a topic on litter and garbage. Unless we talk about it, recognize it, nothing will be done. It's not only up to me, it's up to all of y'all. This concludes my conversation. I've left time for questioning. Do any of you have any? You better hurry up. Your time's running out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony Watkins.
Good evening.
Speak in the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. Good evening. Is that better? Good evening. Um, Tony Watkins, my residence of county, right, is Fulton. Um, I work with the Department of Community Supervision. I've been in front of you guys a few times. This time, it is to invite the members of the board, as well as the county at large, to our annual stakeholders meeting. It will be next Thursday, that's September twenty-seventh, at eleven AM. Uh, it'll be at Mount Zion Baptist Church, seventy-one oh two, Mount Zion Boulevard, Jonesboro. Uh, Judge Wanda Dallas is our keynote speaker. We'll have food, an opportunity for networking, and really just wanting to update the community and show them some of the great things that we're doing to reduce recidivism and work alongside law enforcement. That's all.
Alright, we appreciate you being here, but we did receive, well, at least I received the email on that, so thank you for sending that out.
Thank you.
Lisa Goodman Boiler. Lisa Goodman Boiler. Alright, well, Madam Clerk, that looks like it concludes public comment.
Mister Chairman, that also concludes the agenda for this evening.
Alright, with no further business before us, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, second, those in favor, aye? Opposed? It's unanimous.